Gray?
Here.
Jerem?
Here.
Milton?
Yes, here.
Pauls?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Gurnett?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here. Please rise for the pleasure invocation by Councilmember Gurnett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a good meeting.[35.04][35.04](Laughter).
City Clerk's certified publication on Daily Record, the official newspaper, on October 3rd, notice for recruit council and regular city council meeting October 7th, 2014, and current copy of the opening that is posted in white binder on the East Ballrooms Chamber.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the public agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of the issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Ordinance on final reading and resolutions, rate bonds. Item number five, ordinance authorizing and directing the issue of general obligation bonds and issue of general obligation refunding bonds, City of Omaha, and the principal amount not to exceed eighty-one million, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand, to be termed for identification purposes, various purpose, and refunding bond series two thousand and fourteen A and general obligation refunding bond series two thousand and fourteen B.
Public hearing was held on September 30th. Second, roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item number six is resolution, the preliminary official statement pertaining to the issue and sale, general obligation refunding bonds titled various purpose refunding bond series two thousand and fourteen A and general obligation refunding bond series two thousand and fourteen B. It's hereby approved.
Public hearing on number six is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Wasn't approved.
Second, roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Zoning ordinance on final rigging planning board attachments will take items seven through eleven. That's one case. Seven is ordinance to rezone property located southwest one hundred and sixty-eighth and State Street from AG Air Culture District to Development Reserve District. Eight is to rezone to R4 Single Family Residential District, high density, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Nine is resolution that the revised preliminary platent titled Majestic Point is hereby accepted, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Ten is the plat is hereby approved, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And eleven is the subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven are today. Proponents, please. Mr. Lake?
Yes, Jeff Lake, twenty-one eleven South Sixty-seventh Street, on behalf of the applicants. I'd be here to answer any questions you might have on the proposed project.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Second?
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Seven through eleven are passed, seven to zero. Resolutions, rate preliminary, and plats and plats, twelve and thirteen is one case. Twelve is resolution, the preliminary plat entitled Center Ridge Replat Two, located one hundred and ninety-three ten Gold Street, long attached conditions except in preparation for final plat is authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Thirteen is the plat entitled Center Ridge Replat Two is hereby approved, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearings on items twelve and thirteen are today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Wasn't approved.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton?
Yes.
Pauls? Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Liquor will take items fourteen and fifteen. It's one applicant for two licenses. Fourteen is jams, grill and bar, seventy-eight fourteen West Dodge Road, Class C liquor license application, O location. And fifteen is jams for a catering liquor license, same applicant, same location.
Public hearing on numbers fourteen and fifteen are today. Proponents, please.
Marcus Seabert, eight-one-eight South Ninety-third Street, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Wasn't approved.
Second? Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton? Pauls? Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted, fourteen, fifteen are adopted, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Consent agenda. Any mayor of the city council place an item, may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items number sixteen through twenty were held on September 30th.
Wasn't approved.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton?
Yes.
Pauls? Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
President?
Yes.
Sixteen through twenty are passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items number twenty-one through thirty-six are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed.
Wasn't approved.
Motion, a second, roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton? Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-one through thirty-six are adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-seven is resolution, the city council of City of Omaha expresses its support of initiative, Measure four-twenty-five, which will raise the minimum wage, and it's on the November fourth ballot.
Public hearing on number thirty-seven is today. Are there any proponents? Senator Nordquist, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilman. Mr. President and members of the city council, I'm Jeremy Nordquist, live at six fifteen Dorcas Street, Omaha, and I'm state senator for downtown and south Omaha Legislative District Seven, and would like to thank the council for taking a moment to have this hearing in support of the resolution supporting Initiative four-twenty-five. Initiative four-twenty-five is the result of a citizen petition drive that was organized by and funded by Nebraskans. The result was that it is placed on the November ballot because one hundred and thirty-five thousand signatures were collected in a six-week period, including over sixty-five thousand of those signatures from right here in Douglas County. The proposal is to increase the minimum wage in a modest amount over two years to nine dollars an hour, and it would make a powerful difference to the families that would see that wage increase. And a lot of these are families. There's a lot of misperception that sometimes it's teenagers. We know that about one hundred and forty-three thousand Nebraskans will see raises because of this. It'll impact the lives of sixty-four thousand children whose parents will see raises because of this. Seventy-eight percent of those that would benefit are over the age of twenty, working to support themselves or their families. And forty-three percent of those people that would benefit actually have some college education. So it certainly doesn't fall just on teenagers. In Nebraska, we value hard work. It's probably one value that we share across the board, but we want an economy that works for all workers. And unfortunately, even though statistics show we have one of the hardest-working populations in the country, we have one of the lowest unemployment rates, we have one of the highest rates of working parents in the country, but yet our children and poverty rate continues to go up. It's gone up from fifteen point nine percent in two thousand and nine to seventeen point seven percent in two thousand and thirteen, a sixteen percent increase in just a few years, even though our citizens are working harder than they ever have before. And it just shows that that hard work unfortunately isn't paying. I think it's a shared value that most, the reason we got so many signatures is Nebraskans think that if you put in forty hours a week, you should be able to go home with a paycheck at the end of that week, that you can afford your housing, gas for your car, and food on the table. But that, that just isn't happening. And when that doesn't happen, the economy begins to stall because workers don't have discretionary income, but also the roles of government programs continue to grow. And as a member of the state's budget committee, I see it year in and year out, for the six years I've been in the legislature, as low-income workers, paychecks haven't grown. What has grown is the number of Nebraskans who unfortunately have to rely on programs like food stamps, like children's health insurance programs, and others. But this just isn't pro-worker. I certainly think it's pro-business. Many employers we talked to know it's about doing the right thing. It reduces employee turnover. It increases employee productivity. That is absolutely clear, and there's lots of research out there on that. And our economy, which is largely driven by consumption, needs consumers now more than ever. Research shows that nine dollars an hour of minimum wage in Nebraska would create about seventy-four million in new economic activity and create about four hundred new jobs. I'm proud to say that many of our backers are some of the biggest and most successful business people in not just Omaha history, but Nebraska business history. Some of the names on our campaign filing report are very prominent business people who know that this is the right thing to do for our economy, that our economy needs this right now. For the past seventy-five years, opponents of this have trotted out the same doomsday scenario that we're going to see slashers in jobs, but we've had a minimum wage in this country since nineteen thirty-eight for over, for over sixty years, and every time it's increased, we haven't seen those doomsday scenarios come true. As a matter of fact, we're seeing the opposite effect. The thirteen states that raised their minimum wage since the beginning of the year actually had faster job growth, faster job growth than the states that didn't raise their minimum wage. And the state in the country with the highest minimum wage right now, Washington State, actually created more small business jobs than any other state in the country in twenty thirteen. The same goes for the city in the, in the U.S. with the highest minimum wage. San Francisco created more small business jobs than any other city in the country in twenty thirteen. So if the proponent, or the opponents are right, that this is going to create, or destroy jobs, the data just doesn't back that up. So we think that this is the right thing to do right now for Nebraska, not just for the workers, but for our economy as a whole, and we've encouraged the city council to support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Mr. Kavanaugh?
Good afternoon, John Kavanaugh, thirty-four twenty-five South Ninety-fourth Avenue, and I am the chief operating officer of the Holland Children's Movement, an organization, non-for-profit organization founded by Richard Holland, to focus on improving academic achievement for low-income children. There's absolutely no other factor that more directly impacts the academic achievement of children in our community than the income of their parents. And low-income children, as you all know, are the lowest-performing children academically, and this perpetuates a cycle of poverty because they are the first to drop out of school, they are the first to be unsuccessful in acquiring the skills needed to be economically successful. When we looked at all of the issues and public policies that we could become involved in in terms of changing that outcome, family income is number one. The families working and living on a minimum wage are just not capable of providing the basic necessities in terms of housing, transportation, food, all of the qualities of life that surround success and allow a child to participate in, in the academic setting with confidence and with the ability to be competitive and successful. So as, I first of all, want to commend you, Mr. President, and this council for taking up this issue. What it does demonstrate is your concern for those families working hard. These are all, of course, working people at the very bottom of the economic rung and trying to make their families successful. The fact that you would take up this resolution in itself speaks to your concern for those hardest-working, lowest-income members of our society. What we found in, in participating in this effort was overwhelming public support. The public really gets it. It's been five years since there's been an increase in the minimum wage. These are the hardest-working people at the bottom of the ladder, most of them women, seventy-five percent women, many sole supports of the family, and trying to live on thirteen thousand dollars a year is just not reasonable or possible. There's nothing more that you can do for poor children in this community than to increase their family income, and we greatly appreciate your taking up this resolution and your support for increasing the minimum wage to nine dollars an hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Good afternoon, and first of all, I want to thank you to the city council for taking up this issue when I know that you didn't have to. And we, as hard-working families, like he said, at the bottom of the economic ladder, really appreciate, would really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
I'd like to start by saying that raising minimum wage in Nebraska-
Name and address, just for the record.
Oh, certainly. My name is Sonya Bentley, and my address is forty-four eighteen Parker Street.
Thank you.
I'd like to start by saying that raising minimum wage in Nebraska could have been and should have been a bipartisan effort from the start. It is supposed to be the job of our elected officials to protect hard-working Nebraskans from huge out-of-state corporate interests and the greedy, self-serving lobbyists that represent them. Instead, many of our local politicians have acted as their henchmen, trying to paint the blue-collar workers of this state as stupid or lazy, and equating this issue, the issue of raising minimum wage, with entitlement programs, acting as if we are asking for handouts or looking for a free ride. Nothing could be further from the truth. I have never taken one red cent that I did not earn with my own two hands. Just because some of you feel like the work that I do is beneath your dignity does not mean that I have to do it for next to nothing. There is no shame in an honest day's work. This country, this state, was built by the sweat and labor of men and women who carry lunch pails and punch a time clock, and we will not allow people to continue to climb over our backs and necks to make their millions and advance their careers. We know that some of you like to call yourself job creators and free-market capitalists, but we see you for what you really are, greedy, self-serving opportunists who take advantage of the very people you are supposed to be protecting. I urge the voting public and the city council in Nebraska to wade through the misinformation and the outright lies circulating about the effects of raising minimum wage on consumers and small businesses, to get to the truth, the truth of the matter, and to uphold real Nebraska values, and to cast their vote in support of their neighbors, who only want to be able to earn an honest living and take care of their own families and not be forced on welfare rolls. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Chris Prue, two-zero-eight-zero-seven Veterans Drive. Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is Chris Prue, and I'm a teacher at the Omaha Public Schools. I've been an educational professional in our community for better part of seventeen, eighteen years now, and I've been a longtime advocate for kids. I want to begin by thanking Councilman Festerman for introducing this important, Festerson, sorry, for introducing this important resolution. I'm here today as a proponent of this resolution, a proponent of Initiative four-twenty-five to raise the minimum wage to nine dollars an hour over the next two years, and to testify on behalf of the NSCA, which is the state's largest and oldest professional organization for educators representing thousands of teachers and education support professionals across our great state. My comments rely heavily upon a recent column written by our state president Nancy Fulton. Imagine trying to support yourself or your family on two-hundred-and-ninety dollars a week over the course of a forty-hour work week. That is what Nebraskans' current seven-twenty-five-an-hour minimum wage earner receives for his or her endeavors. Imagine the struggle and the despair that comes with the unexpected expenses, the hopelessness of the never-ending battle to make ends meet. Nebraska's five-year-old minimum wage rate is well below what we can realistically support, or what can realistically support, an individual or family in today's economy. At seven dollars and twenty-five cents, one parent's income falls far short of the federal poverty threshold of twenty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a family of four. Two, two minimum wage incomes in a family, especially if there are children, won't provide much more. And sadly, many non-certificated school district employees and many parents of their children we see in our classrooms every day earn minimum wage. Fairness and justice demands that income from any job provide enough income to meet basic human needs. That is why the NSCA board of directors, and I believe that most NSCA members, support raising Nebraska's minimum wage as the right thing to do. Retired Omaha educator and NSCA member Susan Kalina taught most of her career in low-income areas in Omaha. She volunteered her time for the petition drive that put this initiative on the ballot. Kalina spoke at the State Capitol News Conference on July third, where volunteers turned in boxes of petitions containing more than one hundred and thirty thousand signatures of our fellow Nebraskans to put this important measure on the ballot. The dozens of boxes, she said, were boxes of hope for children in poverty and their families. Educators understand firsthand how raising the minimum wage will help students who struggle and scramble to support their families. That extra income might give the parent the wherewithal to cut hours in an extra job, allowing more time working with their child on schoolwork or attending conferences or school activities. A little extra spending cash will perhaps help parents have their children a little more prepared for school, perhaps better fed and clothed. An increase in the minimum wage will help our fellow education employees, those paraprofessionals, cafeteria employees, custodians, that we all rely on, who do not currently earn a living wage. The men and women who dedicate their lives to driving, nourishing, counseling, or teaching our children should not be forced to live at or below the poverty line. Educators should not have to accept a vow of poverty as part of a public life, or, I'm sorry, as part of life in a public service. Since Nebraska's minimum wage law was passed in nineteen sixty-seven, the state's minimum wage rate has failed to keep up with the rising cost of living. Nearly fifty years later, the minimum wage set in nineteen sixty-seven would be the equivalent of nearly eleven dollars an hour today. Economists report that raising the minimum wage will boost our growing economy and help to rebuild Nebraska's middle class. It has the potential to benefit employers and our state's economy. Ultimately, the passage of this initiative provides hope. Hope for those in or near the poverty line, hope for children, and hope for our future. I hope you agree and will support this resolution, giving Omaha residents a strong voice in support of this common sense proposal to ensure our economy works for all Nebraskans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent, please.
Thank you so much. My name is Christian Espinoza, twelve-twelve South Fifty-sixth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Today, I want to tell you, I'm coming right now from campus in south Omaha and talking to people about the increase of minimum wage. We have knocking more than three thousand doors through the summer, and all the support that we have heard is overwhelming, even though there are some people that make more than the minimum wage. We have, they have family members, they have parents, they have children that make the minimum wage. They want to, they want them to become more sustainable in their families, too. Also, I would like you to, I would like you to know that I'm a, an adjunct teacher at the Metropolitan Community College, and the first time they came out this issue, I was talking to my students, and one of my students say, "I have to work three jobs at the minimum wage to support my kid." It was a single mom, and it's what we found in two. There are more single moms are the ones who are making the minimum wage, not only for the Latino community, for the entire community, as the previous people say it. So I'm here to encourage you to, to pass this resolution to increase the minimum wage for the four-twenty-five. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any, more?
Good afternoon to the council. Willie Barney, president, facilitator of the Empower Network, but also speaking as a parent and resident, one-twenty-three thirty-three Coming Street. First of all, I just want to, as the other speakers have said, thank the council for taking this up. It's very important, it's vitally important, not only for Omaha, but our entire state. If you take a look at the last couple of years, you look at the stock market, it's at, sometimes at very high levels, sometimes record highs. If you look at the last two years, corporate CEO level pay has been at the highest level. The wage gap is at one of the highest levels it's ever been. And if you look at the state of Nebraska, as been reported earlier, three-point-eight percent, or sometimes lower, one of the lowest unemployment rates in, in the country. At the same time, in our state, in certain census tracts, not only in Omaha but around the state, we have citizens living in thirty to forty percent poverty rates in, in twenty fourteen. So we have one of the lowest unemployment rates, yet poverty has been increasing in our state. So we have, as the previous speakers have said, we have people working two and three jobs and still not able to make ends meet. And so they're doing what we've asked of them, they're going to school, they're going to college, they're graduating, the graduation rates are going up, yet we have individuals that cannot sustain their own household. So as you look at the various things, and people try to make us force a choice, "Well, we just need higher-wage jobs, or we need just job training, or we need to do minimum wage." What I say is that we need both. We need to continue to press forward on job training, we need to keep pressing forward on higher-wage jobs, more opportunities, yet if we look across the country, more and more Americans are working in service jobs, and those service jobs just happen to be, many of them, minimum wage. So how do we expect our citizens to support their families, make sure their kids are doing what they need to in school, when we're not providing the basic wage to make sure that they have a sustainable living wage? As you dig deeper into this, we've worked with a lot of families, thousands of families in our community, that are struggling with this very issue. They are working poor. They are working, yet still, in poverty. How does that, that cannot be acceptable at this point when we know we can do something about it. The very strong recommendations, that you look at the research, there are two critical things that you can do to get people out of poverty. The first one is to adjust the earned income tax credit, which allows people to have, to keep more of their income. The second thing that you can do is increase the wage, the minimum wage. There are proven ways to bring people out of poverty. So I really celebrate the fact that this council has taken this forward, and I'm encouraging you, and I pray that you will move forward with this resolution in a unanimous way, to send a message across the state and to working families, working poor, people working in poverty, working two and three jobs, that it's vitally important that we build a strong, sustainable economy that works for everyone, not just a few people, but it works for everyone. So that if they want to send their kids to college, they can send their kids to college. If they want to move into a house that allows their kids to flourish, that they can do those kinds of things, and not have to worry about, always having to worry about just meeting, making ends meet. So I celebrate the fact that this council has taken this on and pray for that you will send a strong message that in twenty fourteen, this economy should be about all residents, not just a few. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today?
My name is Mr. Charles Johnson, twenty-five oh-five North Twenty-fourth Street. I just want to have a little input on passing other wages. Even though nine dollars is, is the number, at nine dollars an hour, even though that's improvement if it's approved, but that still wouldn't even be enough to even get us out of the jam we already in. At seven dollars, what the minimum wage is right now, especially when it come up to nine dollars in two years, if that's what it's supposed to be, it take two years, by then you're going to need thirteen dollars an hour, because we can't even live on the seven now, and we're about time to nine, kicking, we aren't even there to live on that. We have to start the world right now, we need to start, put the minimum wages to where it's going to help right now, not two years later, put us right back where we started. I live on seven-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars a month. I can't, a hundred and seventy of that takes from my car insurance, I must have it, or that's another problem. Not being able to afford it. Well, how can you afford, out of seven dollars or nine dollars an hour, lights, gas, water, insurance for your car, some of us have car payments? We got to bring a uplift, and that's why we having so many crime problems and so many people now from in the hood. I'm going to speak. That's why we have so many problems in the hood, as they call it, because the wages don't pay them enough to, to want to work, because they could scramble on the corner and make that up. And so we got to show them that another way, and that first of all, is, is, let's, let's get the wages to where we can pay our bills, because we can't pay our bills with seven dollars an hour, and not even really nine. So I just wanted to take a moment for y'all to take that in consideration, because nine dollars in two years, you're going to need thirteen in two years. So I'm saying, help us out now, and start the minimum wages where we can begin to start paying our bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Mr. Kagan?
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Kagan, one-twenty-three twenty William Street, and I represent Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. This resolution asks the city council to endorse a twenty-four percent hike in the state minimum wage and increase not indexed to inflation, as ballot issues in most other states. Many studies have examined the impact of raising the minimum wage for those who earn it in Omaha and elsewhere. This large increase will reduce opportunities for the lowest-skill employees, the very ones who need training and skills that will allow them to attain higher compensation. Economists have found very strong independent wage growth among minimum wage employees, that is, many people, teens and others, who start out at the minimum wage after, after several months, they earn more than the minimum wage because of the training and experience on their jobs. One study showed that for each ten percent increase in the state minimum wage, teen unemployment decreased by three-point-six percent. Now, there must be many Omaha teenagers using this wage, or loving this wage, to save for college or their first car. for college or their first car. These youth need entry-level work to obtain experience and training for better jobs. Hiking this wage will increase the price of goods and services for Omaha consumers, cutting into savings. Retailers will reduce staff and replace humans with machines. For example, self-checkouts in grocery stores. Will reduce fringe benefits like health insurance and shrink personal and sick leave options to cut corners. Machines now in fast food and other restaurants can assemble food items more consistently and sanitary than humans. They take no cyclic days, require no health care insurance, and can work 24 hours every day. Employees in our hotel and motel and other fast food industries will suffer reduced work hours and job elimination, the very people who have few skills to obtain other employment. Hospitality and retail businesses that pay minimum wages operate on thin profit margins and will cut staff. This increase will create economic hardships for businesses that encourage tourism right here in Omaha, and provide hundreds here the opportunity to participate in our city economy. Increased labor costs mean lower business profits, which translates into less money to invest in job creation and business expansion. One example of this is what they call wage compression. If you increase the minimum wage too much too soon, everybody else in the business wants their salaries and benefits raised, and that cuts back on the company profits, and the company has less money to invest in job training and experience for their employees. The remediation of poverty argument is bogus. Only a small percentage of adults earning the minimum wage are family primary breadwinners. Among those with children, almost 50% had a spouse who earned over $40,000 annually. In 80% of these families, the minimum wage totaled less than 20% of household income. In other words, you may have a teenager or one of the spouses working at the minimum wage for a time, but the other person in the household, probably the adult, would earn much more than the minimum wage. The Congressional Budget Office knows that many low-wage employees are not in poor families at all, that less than 20% of workers who would benefit reside in households that earn less than the federal poverty line. This wage will boost, will not lift families who are not in poverty out of poverty. Those who claim that a higher minimum wage would impel people, all people, to abandon welfare, ignore that some welfare recipients enjoy that lifestyle, and will never leave it, no matter how high the minimum wage. As alternatives, we suggest job skill training and income tax credits. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
My name's Andrew Sullivan, 7748 Western Avenue. I've had experience with economics, I've dealt with the wage issues for over 25 years in economics. Here's the facts. Having the minimum wage kills jobs. Raising the minimum wage kills more jobs. That's what it's designed to do. We don't want cheap jobs out there. Is there someone here paid $2 an hour to swat flies and hand out cookies? No. We made those jobs illegal. That's the point of doing it. The second point that people miss on this is, you can cite statistics, and they'll say, "Oh, well, there was job growth." It don't explain to you the details. An employer can take 10 full-time jobs, turn them into 15 part-time jobs, and literally reduce 20% of the hours. That's how people get stuck on two minimum-wage jobs, working part-time at 50 hours a week, and have no benefits and no overtime. That's how we got there. You can go out there and say, "It's not gonna do any damage," but you're basically saying, "If you like your minimum-wage job, you can keep your minimum-wage job. If you like the amount of hours you have, you can keep the amount of hours you have." The fact is, the story, history shows, it kills hours and jobs. Second part that drives me nuts on this topic is, people don't seem to have an operational understanding of what the word "minimum" means. Even the most educated people get into this debate. And I will point out, minimum is minimum. You could set the minimum wage at $1,000 an hour. We'd make minimum-wage workers millionaires within a year. But they would be no better off, because they're still at the very bottom of the career ladder. Everyone else is making more money than they are, can buy more and more things, outbid them on anything they want and need. You still have the laws of supply and demand. That's why people get screwed on minimum wage. They think they're getting, they're being conned into thinking that they're gonna get ahead, but they're being bribed to stay at the bottom of the career ladder. That's what you're actually doing, tearing down the career ladder and leaving people at the bottom, offering them false hope. Finally, we never really compared, one thing that bothers me really most about Norquist's proposal, is he never made comparative with other states. At $9 an hour, we'll be higher than all of our neighboring states by 24%, with the exception of possibly Colorado or Missouri. And realistically, they're not near $9 an hour either. So here's what's going to happen. We will have the inundated by minimum-wage workers from other states taking our jobs. While at the same time, investment money in Nebraska will go to these other states where it's less expensive to start up a business. That's the real facts. And Platt Institute is releasing a report today that will explain some of that, by the way. I've heard about it, and I think the council should really consider the consequences of what we're doing. Because we're on the border with Iowa. Norquist mentioned San Diego, or Seattle, or one of these other, San Francisco, I think it was. Yeah, they can do that, because they're on the frickin' border of an ocean. They don't share a border with another state. We do. That makes a big difference, and you really need to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Mary Jane Trumper, 5306 Isard Street, Omaha. I guess I just wanted to make a brief statement and touch on something that Doug Hagan and Andrew Sullivan had just said. I feel like if we really wanted to make a difference in the lives of the working poor, there are so many other better ways of doing that than raising the minimum wage. And what I mean by that, I think Doug Hagan had said about increasing tax credits or decreasing the tax rates for low-wage earners. What we're not being told, or widely known, is who is not included in this minimum-wage People that earn tips, such as waitresses and bartenders. I happened to work my way through college as a waitress and a bartender, so I understand what that is, not to have that minimum wage. You have good nights, you have bad nights, but you know, you're there regardless. It does not affect those people. It doesn't affect ag workers, which in this state is a pretty good number of people. And they will not be affected by this, they're excluded from this. It also doesn't affect those that are chronically underemployed, and we talked about the people working two or three minimum-wage jobs. Also, the people that are earning, say, $10 an hour, but they're only getting 20 hours a week worth of work. Those are not included in this. There's such a much fairer, more across-the-board approach, without excluding these number of people that fall, would fall into this. So that's my two cents worth. I think that we need increased tax credits and decreased income tax. Of course, you can't control people as much when you do it on a tax structure, but that's okay. And I'd also like to, I can't leave without pointing out, it's bigoted to think that people are good because they're poor, and people that have businesses and make money are bad because they make money. That's a bigoted thing to think, and a bigoted way to be. And I just want to point out that your goodness does not come from how much money you have, or what kind of work you do. You either are, or you aren't. It doesn't matter if you're working as a waitress, or you're working as a physician. It doesn't make a difference. Good is good, and bad is bad. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seen none? Public area is closed? Mr. Jerrym?
Yeah, I would like to point out that the, I heard recently, while driving in my car for a short trip, I wish I had time to hear the whole statement, but it was a very eloquent woman speaking, I think over the noon hour, about a program. And she said, "You know, if you're working 40 hours a week in America, you should not live in poverty." And the fact is, that the rate of pay that 775 provides for working people in Nebraska, many of whom are single moms, they, I don't see how they can make it if they work 50 weeks a year at $15,000 and change, or if they work 52 weeks a year at $16,000 and change. That's just not, not acceptable to me in America. Equally, for those, this speaker said, "Should we have people in the military working 40 hours a week who live in poverty?" I mean, this won't address that, but two solid points that she raised, and what convinced her, and her thinking was this bounds and bounds of volumes of research that supported the position that the benefits that come from raising the minimum wage, and historically have shown to do that. But to bring this point home, I was thinking back anecdotally to two recent events to underscore the point. And that was during the budget process, the evening of the public hearing on one of the budget items, there was a gentleman who came in, who said he's a young dad, and he had the important of the bicycle pedestrian coordinator to him in a city that had bicycle advocacy, because he and his wife live on very low wages trying to raise a toddler. And they are trying to make it, can't afford a vehicle, can't afford a bus, so they either walk or bike to work. So my support of this is in part in honor of that young family struggling to make ends meet on low wages. The second person that comes to mind is in my exercise life. I happen to get up early in the mornings and go out and get my exercise done, is the woman I see frequently before 5:00 a.m., walking to work along Leavenworth Street, carrying with her the goods she needs to carry to work, or extra space for maybe the groceries she carries home with her, as a single woman trying to make ends meet on a job that doesn't pay her enough money to be able to afford a vehicle. And so I think of people like that, who are working 40 hours a week and struggling to make ends meet, and I think about the overwhelmingly alarming disparity in income that's going on in America today. And I also think about the one speaker today who said, "You know, really, is this gonna make that big of a difference? No, but it's moving the ball in the right direction, and it will get a working person at the bottom rung of the ladder at $18,000 a year." And that will make the difference in the lives of people who are struggling to pay their bills, and it will make a difference in the lives of that young family, the father who came in to testify during the budget hearing. And it will make a difference in the life of that woman who works and gets up so early in the morning that she has to walk in those hours of the day, in the dark, to her job. So I join in support of this, I think it's the right thing to do for our community, and I'm happy that we can weigh in on this issue, as we do so many other types of issues that normally come around November, December, as we consider our legislative package.
Thank you. I'd say I'm supportive of this, too, and I'd also appreciate that several council members felt it was important to express support for this, as it comes to the ballot on November 4th. And I think that's because a lot of what we do in city government is geared towards addressing poverty in our city, whether that be community development block grants, or housing, or job training, or the Step Up Program with the Empowerment Network, support for homeless shelters, all these things are things everyone should be concerned about, and I think we are, everyone is concerned about these things. Similarly, Initiative 425 represents an opportunity to help the many working families in our city that are living in poverty and below the poverty line. And it has, as has been cited, if you're making $7.25 an hour, that's about $15,000 a year. Imagine trying to survive as a family of three, four, or five people on that amount. Very difficult. I think most workers in our city and our state already make more than the minimum wage, but this Initiative 425 can help those that don't. And I think it's a reasonable and modest approach to help do that, and I hope that we indicate our support here today. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think what I want to do is to illustrate for you, at least from my perspective, the importance of increasing the minimum wage. And let me say very quickly that it doesn't go far enough. We ought to be talking about a living wage, not a minimum wage. We ought to be talking about a living wage for everyone. But let me give you an example of what I'm talking about, and why I'm supportive of this. I want to talk about Walmart on 50th and Ames. I sat there for about an hour and a half one day, because I noticed something, and I wanted to go back and see how prevalent it might be. And I witnessed, in the course of an hour and a half, about 30 different individuals either walking up or riding their bikes up to shop at the Walmart. I don't have to tell Mr. Barney or Senator Norquist that, nor do I have to tell John Kavanaugh that 20% of the folks in my district don't have transportation at all. Not even a bicycle. And most of them work. I stopped several of these individuals that are walking or biking from the Walmart on 50th and Ames, and every single one of them works. And the majority of them work more than one job. And at the end of the day, they still have to walk to pick up what few groceries they can afford. $7.25 ought to be unacceptable to all of us. It's a ridiculous number. $9 is not appropriate either, but I will support this. But what we, what we in this country and in this city ought to be talking about at some point is a living wage for individuals. I agree that we have to maintain our efforts, Mr. Barney, at training and providing opportunities, and getting people trained for some of the jobs that currently exist that can't be filled because we don't have enough of a workforce with the skill sets to do some of those jobs. But at the end of the day, when I watched 30 people in an hour and a half walk or bike up and come back on their bikes with sometimes eight or nine plastic packages that they have to put on their handlebars to get home, and I asked the Walmart representatives, what percentage of their traffic is walk-up? They don't have real specific numbers for that, other than to say, "A lot." That ought to tell us something. I support the $9, though it doesn't go far enough, and I'm supportive of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Milton?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank people for coming down, both proponents and opponents. The nice thing about this bill, this decision isn't the Omaha City Council's decision. This is your decision, each and every one of you. This isn't something that I'm going to help decide for you, or any of the other council members here. I actually received two emails saying regarding the minimum wage... I actually received two emails saying, regarding the minimum wage, telling me their feelings, and they thought the vote today was whether we were going to raise the minimum wage for the city. So I really do hope that the media makes it clear that this is simply a resolution stating which members of our Omaha City Council, how we're basically -- we're announcing how we're publicly going to vote on, in November, on this ballot issue. That's really all this is. I understand and work with people that are on minimum wage, but I also have to say that for all the kind of the name-calling that small business owners got today or anybody else, I talked to three people that own fast food restaurants or pizza restaurants. And I said, is it -- how big of an impact is this going to have on your business? Surprisingly enough, all three of them said, well, it's really not going to have any impact on my business at all because I don't pay minimum wage. I don't pay minimum wage. One of them said, I don't pay any less than $10 an hour, and I have signs out that says "Help Wanted," and I can't get anybody to come in and work. So, you know, I'm a little bit torn, but I don't think that the name-calling that was had today because somebody has a different opinion, I don't think that that goes anywhere. I think what we need to do is sit down. And the one thing I heard -- my microphone's funny today. Anyway.
Just too close to it.
My voice is so loud, I could probably just yell out at everyone. I think the one thing I heard today that was a common denominator, and it was Mary Jane Trumper, and I believe it was one of the proponents, I think Sonia Bentley, if I got your name right. Both of you, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Both of you said, "We need more tax credits."
No, I did not.
It wasn't you? I'm sorry. One of the proponents did, and I don't remember who. And I think that that's excellent. It's the one thing that I think both sides agree upon. Let's reduce taxes for lower-income people, and let's increase the tax credits for low-income. And I see Senator Nordquist, I'm glad that you and I can agree on a couple things, and I think that's great. And that's going to be something that will really help some of the poorest people in our nation, and it won't affect the growth of business. I mean, the one thing that we can do is there are things we can do that not only help poor people but also help grow businesses, because we need to do both of those things. They need to go hand in hand. So although I disagree that raising the minimum wage is necessarily going to help, my fear is that raising the minimum wage could potentially cost the people that need these jobs the most, cost them their jobs. And that is a sincere concern of mine. And if we're going to be one of the states where we have the highest minimum wage than any of our neighboring states, and I believe Mr. Sullivan stated it right, Missouri is at 750 and Colorado's at 8, when we get to 9, we are going to be the highest out of any neighboring state. And so my fear would be is that we're going to lose businesses coming into our state. They're going to go to some of the neighboring states, and I don't want to lose those jobs. And I think that most business owners have shown that if you work for them and you do a good job, they want you to stay and they will pay you more. So, you know, I guess where I'm at with this is this is just a resolution by the city council. It's really, really pretty meaningless. We don't have any impact on whether minimum wage is increased or not. And I guess I would encourage every single citizen in this city to do a little research, to go online and to talk to any one of the people, if you're willing, anybody that came up today, but I know some of you, you can get the email address right online. Talk to people who have studied this and make your own decision. Don't make your decision on how you're going to vote for this because the Omaha City Council said yes or said no. I think that getting information as a voter and trying to figure some of these issues out yourself by educating yourself is the best thing that anybody could do. So with that, I'm voting no today, simply because that's how I'm going to vote in November. I do fear that if we increase the minimum wage, it could very well hurt the very people we're trying to help, and I mean that sincerely. Thank you.
Most in the room. Second. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. I'm a big proponent of participatory democracy. There are several things over the last few years in this council that I wish we would have put to the vote, and unwisely we didn't. But I'm a big proponent of letting people decide what they want to do with their lives. So I am very happy that the petition did put the issue on the ballot. I have two constituencies. I have a legislative constituency out in District 6, and they are split on this issue. Half are saying that they support it and half are saying they don't. Then I have what I call a natural constituency. Those are young people. I've worked with young people for 37 years. Many of them look up to me as their mentor. Right now, currently at UNO, students are probably on their knees begging me to vote yes. A lot of students want this because they're hurting. I also have a nephew who is being currently abused. He's not smart enough to go to college, and they're paying him minimum wage, and he's struggling. He's staying at home with his mother. And yes, I'm a West O boy, but I'm also from the projects, and I'm also from the deep south where there was abject poverty. And I also remember my first job, Burke High School, in which I had to feed a family on $9,500. It's amazing that I even made it. I do believe that I was malnutritioned during that time. But I'm going to be one that makes it a bipartisan issue today. I'm going to vote for it. And if that makes me a target, then what else is new? I've had one on my back for 14 years now, so... But I'm going to go with this. Now, that doesn't mean that the -- those who are opponents don't have good things to say. Very rarely is there an argument that's all black and white, day and night, either or day and night, up, down, down, angel. That itself is not real. That's not a real way to look at life. So the opponents have some very, very good points, but on some of these questions that are tough like this, you got to make an informed decision the best you can. And my barometer inside me tells me that there are a lot of people like my nephew who would like to get out of his mother's house and become stable and be able to pay bills. So I'm going to support this. I'm going to make this measure a bipartisan issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to see you out there, Senator Nordquist. On many issues in the past, we have agreed and disagreed, and I look at you, I think of the cancer drug that you helped in my committee because it was a very tough issue. We were fighting insurance, and I took it, I was actually on that on your side, and I was on the wrong side with a number of the insurance companies, but we did prevail. A week or so ago, the newspapers called me up and they said, what are you going to do on this? And I sort of smiled. I said, oh, I'm going to make copy. I said I needed to have more information, overwhelming information. Now, my heart tells me that minimum wage needs to be increased. My brain is telling me that there are other issues that we need to take a look at, like the tax credits, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why I have some conflicted views here. And I do have family members who would qualify for minimum wage. If they had a choice to vote, which they do, I have a young son, he would vote for it, you know. And also I have to thank you, Mary Ann, for making a comment, you don't have to be rich or poor to be a decent person. So many times we've, in our society, we've made that distinction. You have money, you're good, you don't. And that is one of those things that upsets me, because I do know what it means to be born on the other side of the tracks in my past life, to be honest with you. I will vote no for this today because I do believe we are sending out a message. But Senator Nordquist, I'm speaking to you. I know you've really worked hard on this, and you have received, to get this on a petition, you had to work for it. Because in legislature, we have really set up some guidelines to get on the petition, and you have to work for it. I know. I was part of that mix. But I am of the belief that the number of people who have supported this petition, I'm going to issue them a challenge. Prove me wrong. I'm voting no on this resolution, but I'm just issuing you a challenge, all the people out there, if this is truly needed and you believe it, then get out and vote. It's that simple. Like the councilwoman Melton said, our vote up here is symbolic, I believe, but the challenge to me is, is the challenge to you. If you vote, it will go up or down because this is to you, and that's the way I truly believe it should be. And I do thank you for what you are trying to accomplish today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarom.
Yeah, and I would just add to that. I hope that in the next budget cycle, as the council works with the administration and the formation of the budget and comes to appropriating funds for Heartland Workforce Solutions for job training, that in the first two years, I think, has been about $25,000, although it might have increased slightly this year to 60. When you look at the scale of job training that that pittance of appropriation provides versus the needs that exist, that there's support that I heard here today for increasing that substantially. Heartland Workforce Solutions was created by this council and the prior administration as a nonprofit to take back the workforce development, training programs from the state of Nebraska, to bring them home here to Omaha, belief existing at the time that we could do better because 60 cents on every dollar was going to administrative overhead back then. So I would hope that we can figure out a way to work together to address that. You brought up the Step Up Program, and Willie's advocated for year-round programming in that, and these are areas I hope that we can work on and agree on in a collective way.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Mr. Jarom, I do hope that if this comes up again, you'd call me on that if I'm not supporting that. Because I, you know, I'll just throw out some personal information here. Neither one of my parents had high school degrees, but they were smart enough to make sure their six children have 17 more degrees than what they have. So you can see how I value education. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, for the lights, there's a motion and a second. Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Milton?
No.
Pauls?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. It's adopted on a 5-2 vote. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7F, in item number 38, she laid over three weeks of publication in public hearing. Ordinance on final reading, item number 39, ordinance approving the 13th supplemental amendment agreement amongst the city, Douglas County, and the Omaha Public Billing Commission to provide for issuance of new bonds. An A is an amendment to set that at $15 million. A is an amendment of the whole, set that at $15 million.
Move the amendment to the hall.
Public hearing was held on September 30th. There's a motion and a second on amendment of the whole. Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. Amendment of the whole is passed 7 to 0. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held October 14th, the third reading of public hearing agenda items number 40 through 46 shall be held on October 21st. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading on agenda item number 47 shall be held on October 21st. The public hearing on this item is today. It's an ordinance to approve the execution of a license agreement between the city and Livewell, Omaha, providing for Livewell's usage of city right-of-way for bicycle-sharing stations. Public hearing on number 47 is today. Are there any proponents? Nice long walk for you. A little wellness, right?
Yeah. My name's Julie Harris, Livewell, Omaha, 1516 Coming Street. I'm here on behalf of Ben Turner, who is currently at a press conference as we speak to discuss the B-cycle Expansion Program that's going to be happening. And these are his remarks. Thank you. What is before you is an appropriate permitting process that works for the bike-sharing program to put stations, bike-sharing stations, in the right-of-way. Earlier this afternoon, Omaha Bcycle announced that it is becoming Heartland Bcycle and expanding into council bluffs in the next few months. Omaha Bcycle will add 20 additional stations, 14 in Omaha and six in council bluffs. Most of those stations in Omaha will be placed in the public right-of-way, which is best practice nationwide. Working with Chad Weaver and Carlos Morales in the planning department, we have come up with the document that is before you. This agreement between Livewell, Omaha and the city of Omaha provides us a clear, expedient, and simple process by which we can easily obtain permits to place bike-sharing system in the public right-of-way. To obtain a permit, Livewell, Omaha will have to receive approval from the adjacent property owner and make sure the site is appropriate as defined by the rules laid out in the agreement. We believe that the agreement is fair and hope that you will vote to approve this agreement. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Harris. And do you by chance have the 14 locations where they will be in Omaha?
I do.
All right, let's hear them.
Do you want to hear them?
Yeah.
Hot off the presses, Hanafin, Rivers Edge Park, Ameristar, First and Broadway, Broadway and Main, these are all in council bluffs. 711 South Main Street, Pearl Street and Willow Ave. And then in Omaha, we've got 50th and Underwood, 10th and Dodge, 15th and Howard, 14th and Farnham, 9th and Jones, 15th and Dodge, Elmwood Park, 24th and Lake, 10th and Cass, 12th and Harney, 10th and Farnham, Lewis and Clark Landing, Durham Museum, and 7th and Jones.
That's great. Thank you.
More expansion. We can always use it.
Thank you. Any other proponents today on number 47? See none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading of public hearing agenda items number 48 through 52 shall be held on October 28. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the second reading of public hearing agenda items number 53 through 55 shall be held on October 21st. Roll call.
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. 308. We are, gentlemen.
We stand.